Start.
I'm going in, don't wait, I'm pressing right now.
Yeah, we can hear you, so you've got to mute your computer now. All right, so I'm gonna call to order and we're gonna take attendance, which is really good today, very good attendance.
Okay, Mark Chin, on you?
Here.
Mary Omet?
Yep.
Catherine Metzner?
She's here.
And what happened?
Here.
Bert Schnitzer? Mary Jo Phelps? Here. Joan O'Leary? Yeah.
All right, this may be the first hundred percent attendance in a long time, it's great, very thrilled. Way to start off a new year. All right, um, so the first order of business is to approve last month's minutes. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December meeting.
I'll second.
We have MJ making the motion and Bert seconding. Um, is there any discussion about the meeting minutes? No? Okay, well then, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Actually, I was in that last meeting, so.
You can't vote, yes. Uh, you know, any, uh, so Lawrence. Okay. So in terms of my comments, um, we have a new year. Um, you know, I think this year is gonna be the year we acquire that piece of property on A1, which is great. Um, but I also think it's time to take on some new tasks and we need to further broaden out what we wanna do. Um, the other thing I think we ought to do this year is select those open pieces of property that we wanna combine with what we've done already and figure out. So there's some broad strokes of what we wanna do, right? It's funny, I was talking to the Sustainability Committee last month. Um, and they've got great ideas, we should definitely merge in with them and, uh, find ideas, things like, uh, getting solar panels on schools and things like that. Really, really cool work. So, um, I'm gonna invite, uh, one of them, probably two, to join our next meeting, if that's okay with them. Um, so that's my comments, um. So we'll go on to old business. Residential food comp, I, you'll notice I've pinned down some of the old business to get rid of the stuff that's, uh, not for what we're up to now, so, uh, residential food composting. Any changes, any addition?
No changes, I've been looking up what towns do.
Yeah.
And, like, Killingworth has a cool thing, they have a webinar that you can watch on YouTube, that a woman on the Conservation Commission came up. And so I'm in contact with them, well, I wanna know what the reception is. Um, and I noticed that Madison and Guilford have abandoned their five-some room.
Yep.
And so it's now very similar to ours, they just have a bin at the transfer station. Um, and you can drop off your straps there. And Old Sabroke is the same as ours.
Yep.
Anyway, when Abby's here, I don't know if I'll have time to ask her a question, but this is ours supposedly a pilot program. And I'm just wondering, because it started in July of twenty twenty-three, when is the end date?
Well, you really want to rock that boat?
No, I mean, I don't really, because we're not gonna be spending any money.
We're spending no money, we're irritating the, uh, transfer station guys.
We are, we are.
Um.
And I'm sensitive to that, I totally get that. Um, so, like, killing, like I say, Killingworth, what they do, they have a bin at their transfer station, but Blue Earth comes and picks it up. It's like Blue Earth's little spot there. I wonder, um, so I would like to ask them about that, how that works, and how much that costs for Blue Earth to do that.
I remember when we looked into Blue Earth, at the start of this, and they were kind of pricey and, uh, there was no, uh, Carl shut that down pretty quickly.
Yes, well, you know, there's more providers in, there's more. So, anyway, that's a conversation to have with.
Uh, town.
I. But I would, I, if we could, as the commission is interested in putting a webinar together.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, it, it looked like it was a webinar, pretty well intended by some people, intended by some.
Okay, yeah, no, I think, uh, so a webinar is, or a recording of a webinar would be a.
Right.
Web. Um, and I think the more of that kind of stuff we do, to get the word out there. Um, yeah, maybe even a, uh, library program. Yep. Library or tour.
Right.
People do go to those things.
Yes, yes.
So. Okay, um, yeah, I mean, if you find out from Killingworth what they're spending on that, great.
Yep.
Um. Oh, I thought that was you coming in.
No.
Oh, Catherine's town.
I know, I was wondering.
His volume is just damn low, I can't hear her.
I don't think she's talking, I think she's on mute or something.
Yeah.
Well, I can't, I just can't hear anything, I, I logged, I left the meeting, I came back, it didn't help, I can't, I can't tell what anybody's saying at all, I can't hear anything.
You bet, because we can hear you.
And I, I have to say, Catherine, it's some of the most just prescient, uh, information that you've seen ever.
Yes.
You're missing a good.
So sorry, you're missing the genius that's happening.
So let's finish with old business, then I think we'll bring Abby in. Um, oh, and we already talked about collaboration, uh, so I'm gonna bring the, the Sustainability Committee here, next meeting. And I'm gonna invite them in and. They've got great ideas, they don't have enough people, so we can provide the manpower and, um, go that direction. Uh. So new business, we've got the Plan of Conservation and Development, and it is like perfect timing, Abby.
Oh, you know, I'm not good.
Excellent.
I must be good. So, um, so we've got some, some good updates for the POCD, we have been, um, really trying to get the word out, I don't know if we've seen anything on social media or around, we had it from the Harvard News doing an article for us, we're trying to just get to as many different places as we can. Last time I checked, we had seventy-eight survey responses, so if you know people, if you see our links, if you need a link, if you want a poster, we have little business cards, if there is any way that you all can help spread the word through your networks. What we are hearing from the survey results about how people get their information, they're getting it from social media and they're getting it from word of mouth.
Yeah.
And it carries a lot more weight coming from you than it does coming from staff or consultants. So to the extent that everyone can spread the word, if you and I have ready-to-go social media posts, go email me and I will argue and we'll spread, you know, the whole commission can just spread as far as it can, text people, it's great. So, uh, so any help you can get there is fantastic. Um, but, you know, it's interesting, some of the, some of the higher priorities, we're starting to see a surge in these trends, have to do with things like downtown, pedestrian connectivity, and still a strong desire to see open space, uh, sort of being the priority list, so I think that's good to hear. Uh, and so we really wanna get more folks to kind of give their feedback and, and see if we can round out some of these trends, so. Uh, but, but it's, it's encouraging, and one of, one of the things that this group weighs in on, you know, sort of the strongest, is, is one of the top priorities that's working, so that's fantastic. Where we are right now, um, so we're in this process, the survey is out, uh, we've done some interviews with some different staff members, we'll be going around all town, as well as every single board and commission in town, to try to make sure that everybody has a direct opportunity to take a survey that's kind of tailored to their group. So that's what this is tonight, and what I was hoping we could do is maybe go through some of these questions. If you feel like we need more time or wanna provide additional information, that's fantastic. We do wanna try to get one set of responses from groups, so it's like a unified, um, thing that the consultants can work from. This is not your only chance to participate, this is part of the consultant's kind of fact-finding mission, and it's gonna help steer the rest of their work. The schedule for this project is such that we need to have an adopted plan in November of this year. It's fast, and so they have been working furiously to read plans, to look at all the space documents, to really go through, they just have been poring over some of the GIS layers, and then some of. We just make sure that they understand our resources, what open spaces we have, who controls what, um, and where some opportunities might be. We're also going to be updating the GIS data from our open space to try to get some better characteristics and be able to present that to the public a little bit more cleanly, um, and in a way that says, okay, here very clearly distinctions between local, state, land trust, P four ninety, all that kind of stuff, so really trying to make it a little bit easier to do, uh, so we're not. To get everything together.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, so all of that is, is appropriate, so, um, we're in the survey right now, and the next piece will be to compile that information, bring it back to the planning and zoning subcommittee on February sixth, that's their next meeting, and then they'll start to talk about, okay, where do we need to follow up? What more information do we need, where we wanna tease things out? And then how do we start to structure this plan in a way that will help support the goals that the various boards and commissions have, right? So how, so a lot of this is, how do you wanna use a POCD in order to advance the goals of this commission? Um, so that's really what it is, so I was hoping that we can kind of go through some of these and hear exponential thoughts, and then go from there. I have transitioned, smart, it's cold, right? Uh, I think because it's snowing. So, um, so it's okay, it's friendly for these, and that's not what we really. Um, so without filtering too much of it, um. So, if there are reports, resources that this refuses, that aren't sort of our typical open space documents, and some of the ones that are already housed to the town, let me know, um, if there are places that you are going to look, so things like, you know, resources out of Connecticut, Atlantic Conservation Council, some of that kind of stuff, let me know, um. If there are places that you are looking for in basic species inventory that you particularly go back to when you're thinking about, like, not weed resources or other stuff, let me know that too, because we can kind of reference some of that stuff here. Um, so question one. Are you familiar with the POCD? Have you used it? Why not?
Well, I think we have used it to justify, uh, open space land acquisition. Um, so we're familiar with it. Um, I, I would think all of us are. Um, and we've used it in Granite West and things like that, so it's very, very awesome to have a defined um, goal of where we wanna go. The town plan that we can use in Granite West. And also it's a guide for us.
Yeah, you, I'm trying to get on Zoom on my phone here to see if I can hear you better.
Okay.
So, I think it's in the waiting room. Okay.
Recording in progress.
Your dude.
Okay, that's.
Or you can use it, you can put it up right. Okay. Uh. Try that.
How about now, Catherine? Okay. Go ahead, next one. Hey, the mic's low.
Uh, so any more comments on the POC, on failure of the POCD or how we used to the best? Um, so from your perspective, what are its strengths and attributes? Have they changed in the last decade and what might be different to you? So what's, what's the best?
About life, I don't know, you want to point?
I guess generally that when we moved in, I just thought it was such a nice weathered environment and this kind of picturesque and went on town every time, but now it's really more than we wanted to say. The way you. Black. Yeah. So that's changed a lot, like in the background, is that what you mentioned? Mm-hmm.
From my perspective, it was the shoreline and the easy access throughout the town. Uh, the shoreline and getting out to the water.
Marinas.
The marinas, the beaches, well, I'm not really a big fan of marinas, to be honest. Yeah. But, just the whole, uh, sort of, you know, the island of, you know, it, it's, it's a cool place.
Yeah.
But.
And when we moved here, our kids were very young, two and four, and so there's a lot about schools too. But, uh, we had lived in a landlocked state, so um, having a beach was very boring.
I'll say one thing, it seems like we do a pretty good job of maintaining the colonial look as much as possible, you know, from the, the historic districts. And even the, you know, colonial houses that are not in the history district. Like, to me, that's a big deal.
It's got states. And what?
Resources.
At least, at least.
Yeah, I think in addition to being a war zone, trapped people, um, they're quintessential. Um, we also have community ended events and a lot of different community-oriented organizations, which people together, uh, to do things, um, for the town. Um, also, again, to reiterate previous theme, um, the historical preservation of our former houses and structures. And the continued support for that, and also with regard to the preservation and, uh, who's particularly with regard to all the parks that we have, um, uh, through the Clinton Land Trust that we have access to, uh, housing trips, and then finally, our location to so many, our central location to so many beautiful things in New England and the state have passed it to the miles of New York. So, and then, um, to our northern, uh, the sea, uh, the sea ward, the Mystic Sea Ward, uh, you have access to other areas up there, uh, Stoney Denver. Lot of beautiful historic communities, essence. So it's, it's a beautiful location, centrally located, and also deep between New York and Boston.
Yeah, so the train, and the, like, newer train situation, it's pretty nice.
So, from the perspective of the Conservation Commission in particular, um, what are three to five of the most important open space challenges or needs that we are going to have in the next ten years? What does this commission see as those critical pieces that we need to not ignore this plan?
I don't know, one, I'll say.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say is bigger properties that are expensive. And how to handle those when we're on, like, a smaller budget and a very long timeline. You know, how do you manage sellers' expectation or beating like their price?
Right.
You know, that's, it's just a the dynamic of time and money and desire from them. But us being able to reach two things a little faster and a little more certainty on the budget.
Yeah, to that end, I think the, uh, my thing is, we really don't have a, um, way to fund the open space acquisition. It's there, we occasionally can drip some money in from, you know, targeting properties that are doing some bizarre stuff. But in general, we should have a very, um, uh, the damage it does is we can't be proactive, we can only be reactive, and we can only be reactive if we have a property owner that's willing to play ball with us for a long space of time. Um, so I would say the, uh, the lack of an open space acquisition fund is probably the biggest thing, and as you know, Abby has put it into the funding request for the capital funding, we'll see how that goes. Um, but that allows to be much more proactive and much more adaptive for the right properties rather than reacting to what's available.
And to go further with that, in regard to needing an adequate open space acquisition grant, um, should go into a long-term plan, not only for one, uh, one nation from the town, but every year making.
That is what we put.
And then another thing that's important is, we need to push uh, planning and zoning to go forward with implementing the discussed regulations we have talked about. There, with regard to the ten percent, um, set aside for new developments, to ensure that that set of science is, uh, donated to, um, qualified land trusts that are gonna do a proper preservation, uh, conservation and, uh, uh, trap system plans to allow the public use of that property. A lot of the properties were given to, um, current name trust organizations that do nothing in that. So the property sits there without any public use, without any conservation, um, without provision of drills. Um, so we need to get that regulation in place with regard to the ten percent set.
Anybody else? Sorry, Joe.
I said a specific thing, um, former ponds, properties where people used to work, I guess, and then like, there's an abandoned house, like, right when you go down eighty-one, you're welcome to Clinton, there's ghost houses that's like been empty for, they don't know how long, does anybody own that house?
You're, you're talking about one of those.
Twenty-two, one high, right on the corner. I think eighty-one, that's up to see.
When the historic district did its inventory of the historic houses in that area, they found that that is a very significant house in connection with its architecture and its history, um, that would warrant preservation. However, that being said, um, this goes back to, we now only need sufficient funds for open space purchase and preservation, but we also need sufficient funding to, um, provide for effective historic preservation. Um, moving forward, we have a lot of people who have lived in houses, their families have lived in the same houses for three, four generations. They're starting to leave town, and they come in a text, the historic district commission, and say, what, what can we do, can you buy, we wanna make sure it's preserved and not knocked down with a rebuild. Um, but problems, historic district commission doesn't have money to do that. So maybe, maybe we could see if the state could help implement some type of a system that would provide the funding to local towns where maybe they could buy one of those fixed, have it fixed up, sell it to somebody who's historic preservation minded, and then the money from that ship to the next, to know what you create.
Okay, so I've tried two different devices here, and it's not any better, so I'm only getting part of this conversation. Um, unfortunately.
So Catherine, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I can hear, I can, I mean, it's on and off, it's choppy, there's like some sort of a delay, and sometimes I'm hearing an echo, and sometimes it's stopping and going, so it's very choppy, I'm not hearing everything, but, um, I hear talking about open space and historic preservation, um. Do we not have some sort of input on setting aside open space for some affordable, single-family housing?
So this is your opportunity to share those ideas and priorities. And the, what the, what you need for the POCD is to get a clear sense of those three to five things that you think are five priority areas that this commission would endorse, focus on, advocate for in town, under your charge as the Conservation Commission. In the plan, there are additional topic areas, including historic preservation, including affordable housing, all of those things get included here, so it's not, so you are welcome to comment on any of them, what we need though is this commission's priorities are blank. We also recognize that the following things are critical for the overall success of the town, so those things need to come together, so if there are things like specific trail development, is there any thought that you have on the town's willingness to acquire and own the deed to property and, and take property that way versus partnership with the land trust, is there, do you have any, that types of mechanisms of preservation, are there any, any thoughts on that? I know, uh, we had a great partnership for the last round of things, that's awesome, but, but I don't know what to think in terms of the town's commitment to, to ownership.
Well, that's the thing that I've, the experience that I've had in the past was, um, had, getting the town to buy property, because the town doesn't want the liability and the maintenance, uh, um, responsibility, and so that's why the, the wife's love day eventually didn't go through until the land trust, um, showed interest in buying it, and so we basically handed them the grant and they went through it. Um, we, I, we haven't really, you know, and then of the, and then the town put in the fifty-two thousand, whatever it was, but, um, I, I've never, I've not, we've not been successful so far in getting the town to actually put aside uh, open space under the ownership of the town.
I've gotta say, for the most part, I mean, there may be some very specific parts of the land, but for the most part, the partnership with land trust is exactly the right way to go, we are not, as a town, equipped to own and manage trails and maintain properties outside of the core Clinton town properties. And I think the land trust is.
Then why aren't we just the land trust then? I mean, we have to be, we have to be doing something more than just uh, assisting the land trust getting grants for open, open space, or we have to have, we have more of a mission than that.
And, 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 you know, Westbrook. They, their conservation commission buys. But they want.
Yeah, they.
I didn't, you know, sit, you wonder, well, where does all the money go? Uh, you know, besides dump trucks, you know, fire trucks. Um, you know, water tanks, you know, underground water tanks. It's like, where does all the money go? These other towns seem to be able to, I love the idea of the twenty-five thousand, I mean, I know that's twenty, but I've been, I've been asking the town leaders for probably twelve years to put an annual, some sort of money in annually, just as balls on deck, you know, with, with, you know, with psyche for that, it's just like, you know, should they look after it like you do?
Oh, Mike, in follow-up to that comment, and I think this could be an important thing to put down. And going back to our discussion, in order to have more historic preservation and open space purchase, we have to have adequate funding each, and where can you get the most adequate funding and the best benefit, but we need long-term, further. We need long-term further investment in planners for the town and grant rights. Because if we can get those people on staff full-time, that will ensure that we can get a lot of funding for many of them. It's not, not only open space purchase and historic preservation, but also with regard to down in by location and development and others. So again, I think the most important thing, since we are planning committee and a drug spaceship today, let's get money into um hiring more planners there and more rent. Rent.
Yeah, I don't think we could have done what we did with this current property acquisition without
your expertise, and it just moved us over where we would have never been able to do that.
Um, Catherine, it's a good point, but I, again, I, I just thank you, you put the property where the uh best uh best uh management is going to be, and I think it's been shown repeatedly, the land trust are good stewards of land, and so why, why mess with that relationship?
I, I don't have any problem with that, I'm not against it at all, I'm just saying, the question was, how do you get the town interested in doing it? And they're not going to be, at least the last I heard. I don't have a problem, but the thing is, we're also looking at, um, like, because the, the land trust is the best place for it to be, to be preserved. We might also be looking for uh land to save for future use. That would not be something that the land trust would, would be involved in, that would be to, I, I don't know, it's just, it's just the idea of putting aside certain properties for future planning, should we need it for whatever. I, I don't know, I mean, we can't, it seems like we need to be able to take some properties off the market so that we don't have to worry about what uh, uh, you know, whether we're going to need that property, but somebody's going to come along and buy it for something else. Um, we need some space to move around, to make, to make our plans. And so that's a different purpose than land trust. Land trust property is to never be disturbed, to be touched, and for recreational purposes. But I'm, I'm, I am concerned that we're going to lose properties to developers that we might need later on, and we, I think we should be thinking about setting some areas aside that might be critical. So we don't have to fight about it later on or something, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Well, for example, a good way to illustrate your point, Catherine, is we're going to need to find new property for should we be proactively looking right now for property for them? Because the existing property is probably going to be under water.
Okay, but is that the purview of the conservation?
It's not the competition.
I mean, it sort of dovetails into the next question, so this, we were just sort of talking about sort of the, the open space challenges or needs, are there any particular open space needs that you see? And because the next question gets into these other topics of things like the firehouse infrastructure challenges, bigger picture challenges that you see.
I think one thing as far as open space, more open space that we need is specifically in terms of public park. If we want to have more of this.
Yeah.
If we want to have any type of thing where the town becomes a destination point and focus to bringing tourism or, or, or just people for our downtown stores, it's not even sufficient part. And um slow but sure, all of our extra parking is diminishing in the downtown area as the uh the recent sale of the um, the school property here on Main Street. Um, a lot of that was basically public parking used when we had community events. A lot of that's going to be taken away. So what are we doing as far as if we want downtown activity and we want to spur the economic development of downtown and community oriented events, we need park. So going back to Catherine's statement, yeah, we should look for a space to preserve for that reason.
That's what I'm talking about. You know, for future planning, you're going to need to like move around a little bit. You think about the, the, the center of town, is there any areas there that we could make small parks out of or, or whatever, you know, things where people uh, I, I'm just saying, you know, we, we need to be able to uh go forward. I, I don't know, it's I just, there's other things besides um, you know, hiking trails and such, there's gathering places, there's all kinds of things.
Totally agree. Again, probably some of that's not our purview, but some of it, like small park in the middle of downtown, absolutely is.
So
That's, you know, basically some of the things that I'm talking about. Um. Yeah.
So downtown, we're just talking about the firehouse. What are thoughts on things like combined park and parking, geo grid parking area as well as park space on that property along the river? Those kinds of things are, are you open to sort of supporting that kind of activity or, you know, key, key pieces? Or things like, um, you know, everyone's really kind of similarly oriented on, you know, coming here and enjoying the town or, or appreciating the town for its coastal resources. How is public access to coastal resources preserved? Should we be looking for opportunities for more? If a storm comes and someone wants to be bought out, is there an opportunity? Should we be planning for an opportunity for those kinds of things? So just thinking ahead, what are the things that we might want to make sure our policies and planning documents prepare us for should the opportunity arise? And are there any opportunities like that that you can think of that might be worth checking out?
Yes. So um, remember back when I said I wasn't thrilled with Marina's in Clinton, I think they've taken up a lot of very positive waterfront space that we have. Um, and I think it would be um an opportunity when some of these Marina's, you know, set is to potentially create a waterfront space for Clinton that might be, you know, restaurants, bars, those kinds of things along the waterfront. We have some, but we don't have as many as would be nice, we don't have it connected to the downtown in any way, shape or form. So they're, they're haphazardly scattered. And it'd be nice if you were walking downtown and then you could go uh get a nice dinner over and, yeah, maybe it's the fireplace, maybe it's the Elliot. Whatever, but it would be nice to have some waterfront associated with that.
And, and we wouldn't necessarily have to get rid of business, we call it all that big hobbies. We can make it a mixed use where they have an integration between Marina's, um shops, restaurants.
Yeah, I mean, Westboro, that's all I'm asking.
You're a sailor.
Well, but then you also come up against our um wastewater treatment issues too. We're limited right now.
Oh, I, I'm not solving the problem, I'm just saying, this would be
Yes, yeah, right. It would, but that is a huge thing in terms of conservation is dealing with that issue. We can't expand things like restaurant, especially things like restaurants until those issues are
Yeah, no, there's, there has to be a plan for that.
And, and also, I was saying, in terms of the result, the coastline resiliency uh issues that we're going to face over the years as uh you got rising water levels. We need to push for stronger team local representatives, our state representative, our uh state senators, um for the state to provide more funding for the shoreline communities because this is really a huge um cost of, of developing this resiliency plan that can be placed on the town. The local shoreline towns, unless we can really lobby statewide support. Because even though some towns aren't on the coastline, if we can do this, um, we're, they have the ability to enjoy it.
I think we should probably move along, Abby, because we're now in
So what are the major accomplishments that the conservation commission should achieve in the last? What are the things you are almost proud of that you've done?
I think we've put together a food waste recycling program and worked with the town on that. I think we've worked with the land trust to acquire property in the past, the wife's love day. Now, I haven't been, they, they give a ten-year thing, I, I don't have that uh history, I don't know if Larry or uh Catherine, I don't know if you can hear us, but you know, somebody with that history. MJ, I don't know how you've been.
I, I've been in the town for a while, but it definitely Larry has been on the conservation commission for quite
The one thing I would say, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think the conservation commission has been um in play for about two years. Before that, it was a part of another commission, although one of the charter provisions was to create a separate conservation commission. It, it took over and replaced the open space advisory.
Uh, that's right.
And, and the, the charge of the open space advisory board committee was to identify all the areas of local space in town where we may in the future wish to purchase or to preserve in some way or manner. So we did accomplish creation of a gigantic list of open space properties, and over the years, the land trust has used that and other people have used that to um, to see, you know, to, 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 to move forward in attempting to get those properties or preserve those properties.
We set up a whole greenway map and, and everything showing all of the properties that should be of interest and you know, that's all, we mapped it all up.
Correct, all of the map that we did over the years, because our charge as conservation commission was to identify all of our um, all of our assets, um, to create a plan of conservation for those assets and then to execute that plan of conservation. Um, and um, so I think we've done doing the map. And now we're starting to proceed forward to actively help conserve these properties with the land trust.
I think that's good synopsis.
So this is, I'll do you a little bit of repetitive, and what are the three highest priority initiatives or objectives that the conservation commission is currently pursuing or things should be pursued over the next ten years? So we have the fund, and that seems to be sort of the, the highest priority. The way in which um land that may come to the town through a regulatory process is managed and allocated, and what we're seeing is another one. Are there any others that we need to sort of separate from an open space and conservation perspective in particular that we would have as an objective?
It seems kind of big, but invasive species. It's a huge
What's that?
Invasive species?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say one, it might be even broader, actually, is habitat in general.
Sure.
I think we kind of look at like renewable energy and so it can actually be destructive to the habitat in some cases, where like you're decimating property to put a solar field in. Just habitat, which invasive, also like when we make decisions for, you know, building and weapons. Are we, are we managing the things or are we actually thinking about it? But I'm, I'm like an animal.
No, that's good.
Like, for instance, we have like beavers. You know, and like the, the weapons commission kind of manages the, the destructive but there's like usually a balance to be struck in some of those solutions. You know what I mean? Like, because they create, they are destructive, I have to move my backyard.
I know, you live on a street where you have a lot
Yeah, and it's, I'm talking about what I'm saying, that doesn't make me wrong, I'm just saying like you have a voice of habitat across a couple different things. And maybe even have like a I don't know, like a write-up of some principles around. How do you know when the habitat matters? For the thing you're dealing with, like, in fact, should we actually sell land to people that are going to completely destroy it and cover it with salt?
Cave paradise, political park.
Yeah. That's the, the property that we are buying right now. The seller was talking about someone wanting to buy it and put massive solar and those like, I had to reset everything. Basically annihilate that place to put in you know, renewable energy.
When the town um renovated the dock, the area that down at the dock, the park that was
Yeah.
Um, you know, members of the land trust went to those hearings and, you know, were saying, like, you're going to pave that? If that's like caveman stuff, you gotta, you gotta use like this gravel, let, let the bird filter the water before it goes back into the sound and everybody's like
Yeah, it's just the thing, like, it's sort of like the parking lot back of uh, like that I've been railing against for a while now, the uh, bottom brake parking lot back that just filters right into the Indian River and, of course, yeah, we had a solution and then the inland wetlands KOed it.
Yeah, I don't think we should bring that up.
Another example is like ponds that get filled in and one of those can grow. Ponds get basically wiped out over time. There are things like, uh, I just had another one too. Even stuff like coyote populations. You, you know what I mean? Like just thinking about stuff like that.
Well, they're land well, oh, they're
They're like a well completed.
Yeah, we, I don't know if deer
I, I didn't watch a moment of that, but
This is a thought, that's something, I don't think people necessarily would take that.
I mean, I guess just flora and fauna, you know, just
Yeah. Yeah, because like invasive species, like they will completely annihilate whole properties that they
Yeah, and I think we need to take this much more, and you know, I've been sort of like we, we took Japanese, not, we, we did some things with that, but I think you're right, it's frank mind, it's a lot.
Yeah, a lot of good things.
Yeah, and I think that is a role we should play.
So So it's, it's different than, than the, I mean, inland wetlands, they don't get to say, save the beavers, they get to say, don't scrub the water. Right, and some of that protection is great, but they can't say, we're going to deny this thing because you've got this other thing here, and it's very rare that they have the authority to do it, so this, this would be to, to have.
Yeah, it's just the voice of that, I mean, I've worked with the weapons and they did think about that stuff. Like for the stuff behind our I'm just saying, it's a thing that we should kind of persist on, like
I, when I was on inland wetlands, I used to think I don't know if this maybe sounds too idealistic, but like if, if there was something you could give to realtors to give to people that are buying property in a sensitive area and say you know, it, like, the realtor wants to make the sale.
Right, they're not going to give it
Right. I know, but if, some people have complained, if I had known
Right.
you know, about the impact of beavers, I might not have bought that property, and so you know, it would be good to let them know. And we, it would be good to let them know that this town cares about I mean, individual properties, but also everything. You know.
Should have our, our little factor model for
Yes.
how you, uh, plan this, which we kind of have in there, but it, it just isn't part of that, you know.
Yeah, I don't think you were here, Abby, but maybe you were, when we created a multi-factor model to evaluate property acquisition.
Yeah, I think there was, it was being discussed when I was first coming in.
Yeah, just, we have that, I ran through, the most recent one ran through and it was positive, so. So you said no, hundred.
Yeah, can I add a checklist for the next ten minutes? I just think we have to think of the overarching
I just think we have to think of the overarching problem with. Uh, coastal resiliency. Can we work closer to the coastal resiliency? Uh, group, namely the wetlands. Um, I have the same ones on crack, crack room. Because um. At the North Room's house, one day they invited me over and they're willing to donate their land to the town. Because they see the wetlands are coming so close to their house. And um. When it all flooded around them uh last year. They were the only ones that didn't flood because they have all these trees planted in front of their house and they have like a lot of fire. They left everything. It's completely covered. And I mean, they're the only ones that didn't flood properly. Because they had.
Because of that.
But the son told me that. He's just, he took me to the back of the house and the brothers were just coming.
Where is this?
On Pratt.
On Pratt.
Oh, yeah.
And he said he would rather donate it to the town than somebody come wipe it up, except for rescuing, wipe it out and.
Yeah, well, we need to put a program together for the DA to. Okay, what, what else we have?
Okay, so there are, some of these are a little bit repetitive. So we'll kind of describe the acquisition challenges, needs, targets for the next ten years. So is there any, anything else anybody has to say about that? Um, sustainability initiatives the board has achieved or plans to focus on? Who said something about that? Any other? Major priorities?
At some point, I would love to get into solar panels and. Not all, not fair touchy property, but. Got some ideas, but yeah, no, it'd be great.
Schools.
For the schools, for the town. I know the town has some, but. Uh, you know, every single parking lot, you know, maybe we should have covered. So, you know, sustainability and. Yeah, I, I think over the next ten years, we're gonna focus on.
Anything else that you want the consultants to know about beyond so they don't miss in its presence? Like I said, you'll have more tracks of this. We'll have more shops that are being specifically around these issues, but is there anything that they should know now?
One thing, and I think you guys talked about a little bit is we just don't want to. So. I kind of like the developments that have come up so far. But too many of them, and it's all the nature of planning. So you have certain limits that you can go to and. You know, other than that, you know, this town really can't handle massive. I can't see.
Too many.
Yeah.
Things still.
Too many what? I didn't hear that. Too many what?
There's a lot of weapons, you know, there's marches and, and.
We just have to pay attention to all that stuff and, and also keep the character of the town.
Well, that's where the difficulty is, is because we have a lot of sensitive areas. And it's gonna be under pressure, you know, and so we have to, uh. Well, my, my concern is making sure that um hopefully planning and zoning in inland wetlands will. Um, have some sort of. Requirement to look at the plan of conservation and development and take some advice from it. Take the future, the, the plans for the future seriously and decide accordingly.
And it's interesting, so if any zone change, special exceptions, if, if it's not a type, like it's kind of like a by rights review use. The P S C D factors into all of those things and they have to go back and make findings for specific applications. So if the right goals are in the P S C D, it pushes folks to have to design and to be able to say you've met these criteria. And you don't want them so specific that nobody can achieve them, but you want them specific enough that. The commission has something to sort of evaluate against or to say. We are recommending that we need a regulation that achieves blank. We have fifty foot tidal buffer protection adjacent to tidal wetlands. Is it strong enough? Is it enough? Right? That kind of discussion. You know, we have, you know, again, the need to change or address how open space is preserved when it's coming with the subdivision process. Those kinds of things. We're not gonna see a lot. I mean, there's a few key properties, but we're not gonna see massive subdivisions the way that we used to. And so there are other regulatory mechanisms that we should be thinking about. And maybe part of the P S C D is one of the steps is to say. Review your regulations and evaluate the following goals, right? Coastal resiliency, that kind of stuff, and we're gonna, and we've been in that way too. So there's, there's opportunity there. Absolutely.
But I'd like the applicants to understand all of that before they even have their application accepted by these boards. So that they don't go, uh, so that they don't.
Me too.
You know, I mean, they need to be aware that before they decide, so that they can't say, well, we bought this property. Have to let us do what we want and it'll be a hardship now. Before it's a hardship, they have to be able to have all of this information. And they can decide for their, for themselves whether they want to invest in this and go with the plans that we have for our town.
Well, well, I would say if we want to, we have to balance this. If we want to ensure that we preserve the community. Um, values and interests of the town. Which is really displayed by virtue of the fact that all our committees and boards are townspeople, followers. For those townspeople to be able to, when they sit in their different positions and boards. For them to be able to make sure that they're addressing all the and balancing all the proper interests of the town. Again, it's important for us to have more people that those boards can consult with. I mean, a strong planning department with planners who are educated in these areas that can sit at. Board meetings and give the advice needed so that the proper decisions are made by our volunteer board members. So again, I go right back to, we need a strong planning. Which means more plans.
I'm assuming these, these contractors and consultants are gonna like take the goals and then look at the budget. Then look at the current spending. Is that the goal of the plan?
Sort of. So this, this isn't the capital plan and this isn't going, I mean, it will say. Your capital planning should count for the following things and, and that, so you know, you'll get interview. Emergency management also, also has an interview, right? It goes, so it's going everywhere. And so as the final document is crafted and goes through a public process to get the final goals and, and implementation used in place. It's that balance is gonna be there. It's, this is not. A directive. This is not detailed enough to be like, we're not gonna be getting, you know, estimating costs for specific projects in here and how we're gonna go ahead and fund them against another project. But it will say, you know, the town should or should not invest in, you know, energy spending. That doesn't, you know, incorporate some kind of green component to it or, you know, those kinds of things. That when, when the town makes the following decisions, these are the policies and procedures we should have in place. And if those are in the plan and when those grants come up to support those things, then we, then we're eligible to apply for them because we have this broad, broad bracket. It's not necessarily going to say, look, your fund balances this and you have all these great ideas, but you can only afford to do pamphlets on knock, that's all you got. And so that, that's, that's not it. It's, it's more, you know, you should be doing the following things so that you grow a program and are ready to accept funding.
I, I have one question and I don't know if anyone can answer, but. Since we're trying to determine what we need going forward. I guess one consideration is, is AI gonna be used in connection with running the town? Outside of that.
Grand question. I'm not sure it's relevant to this thing.
Well, since this is for the next ten years, I mean, it is gonna be.
There will be an issue.
I, we could, I would write, uh, great. Where I do that every day, that's what I do for a living. I'll tell you why. For the specific applications, sometimes it can be like a massive or small.
Yeah.
So I mean, as something like, believe it or not, rating rates can actually, it can fill out a lot of stuff for you. And then you just have to tweak it a little. I don't know. We should just try to.
It's the worst. We should have been able to pick something that is coming up and then try it out, right? And see.
Try it, try whatever. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's incredible. I would push forward that the idea that the last thirty years or so, there's been artificial intelligence running the town. Yeah. I've been to some meetings that are just like the worst theater, you know, like. And. Clinton has its own and it really is.
Well, we have an excellent chair.
I, I can agree with you more. So helpful. I did to see that request for, you know, money every year annually, you know, it's just like, man, this is.
We haven't got all the views. Oh. We haven't gotten it. We'll, we'll work on it. Um, anyway. Uh, anything else?
No, I will pull this together. I will, just one thing for me. They stress this, it's been stressed before, but transit oriented development. You know, I would love, like in the summertime, uh, if you get off the train, there's one of those bike rental things where you can take a bike and head down to the beach. On the right.
Cool.
Some people knew we had.
Great idea. I, I.
Well.
I'm with you.
My, my son did at one time in New York and so.
Even if it's a bird scooter, I, I don't want them left all over town. But if there were certain areas and you could take a bird scooter down to the beach. Be.
Respond to one area. This is right, what I do for the city of Bridgeport. I defend all the liability lawsuits. And when bird and other scooters came in and were promoting use of their product.
Yeah.
Anytime there is a scooter accident, of course it can't be the scooter operators for it. So we're gonna sue the city for having a sidewalk or the placement of this post should have been put there. Because when I came up off the curb and started to go on the sidewalk, it certainly turned this way because of the death they were gonna hit the post.
That's a, that's a really good point.
What I'm trying to say is this creates numerous life.
Yeah.
What's that question?
Yes.
Who's gonna endure against this?
Yeah.
The town or the company that's coming into that rock?
Very good. Very good, Abby. That is why it's valuable to have everybody's input. I would never have thought that. It is absolutely a hundred percent. All right. Good?
We're good.
Anybody, any last comment before we get on to the rest of the meeting?
I just have one quick, quick thing about connectivity. We were talking about the marinas, the restaurants versus the river. If you go down to Conner Street, um, there's the sidewalk finishes. Now you're in a row where, up to where Lobster Landing is.
Right.
And then you come back, you come back to side, we're up there, it's walkable now.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, down Grove Street, you could get to a certain point by the garden there, the uh short line doors. And then get to the end and the sidewalk just stops. They started it ten years ago and it just stopped.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's because you're worried about the tide coming in or why this.
I don't know.
But they raised lobster landing. Now it's beautiful. They put the lobster landing restaurant there. That's a big destination place.
Yes, what, it was one building. They got the other building next.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But if you can walk around that corner, now you can go down Conner Street and you can rent a kite.
Yeah.
That's great.
And, you know, if we wanna develop tourism, we can do so. Here, it's great.
Um, couple things just to keep you remembered. So the next, uh, there'll be additional stuff that comes out for sort of general public assumption and announcements made of this stuff. I'll remind you, once again, survey, get people there and I want to make sure, um, email it out a little bit of course. The other part of this, um, April, it's probably the eighth or the tenth, I think, right now. We are targeting for the first public workshop on the P S C D. So that's just kind of a timeframe to keep in mind. Um, we're gonna do the head of schools, pre-graduation and stuff. And then, um, on another topic, February twenty-sixth, right now, I'm holding for the presentation of the coastal resiliency plan. So you have a workshop here at six or six thirty. You'll hear, there'll be more announcements on that. We're waiting for some final documents to come through, but just dates to think about in the future.
All right, so now we're gonna open up. The subcommittee on land acquisition.
Do you have to close?
No, no.
I mean, oh, no, okay.
No, oh, I'm sorry. Of course, fine. Have we had any? Okay, good. Okay. Um, so we're gonna open up a thank you for your patience, Doug, although this was very relevant to your, uh, for land trust, so. I'm sure there was some benefit to you being here on Whitechapel. Um. So, uh, we had no meeting in December. So November, we had minutes. I just need to get those approved. Somebody from the subcommittee can make a motion to approve the minutes.
Not on this.
I, I can make a motion to approve this. All right. So we have. The motioner, Marcus. Okay. Um. Just from a step where we are. Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries in minutes. Uh, all right, thank you for that. Pardon me. I'm gonna deal with that. Um, so we've, uh, we have now done the state O squad grant, the deep O squad grant, and we've done the federal grant. All those things are in, done and dusted. Uh, we've done the Wharton Trust. We, uh, answered a few additional questions they came back with. Um. The O squad grant and Abby, before you leave. Okay, um, they asked a question about deeds and timing of the acquisition to when you needed the deed and all that. In the package we submitted to them was the old deed, the existing orders, but obviously we can't do deed yet.
Right, it sounded as though if folks were in a position where they had to immediately close, that seemed to be the brux of that email. We can give them a call and find out is there anything in our application if we're not funded to close until after we know about the situation of the grant that would be. I, I think it's for folks who need to make decisions and get their deeds in order so that they can close immediately.
So when we hear, I know we're supposed to hear from the state grant sometime in April, May. And then how about, um, how about with regard to the federal?
Same timeframe we hear from it, but then there would be administration of that grant.
Okay.
So. That's something to put Mark and Larry on work and you guys on work. Is we may not be able to close August first. If we get that federal grant, we'll hear about it April, May. Um, but then in terms of getting all the paperwork, et cetera, you know, it's. Um. It may take. You know, three, four, five months in addition to that, so may not be August first that we're closed because we're not allowed to close before we get the money. For the federal. Yeah. So that's the only issue on that.
Is that something we have already talked about?
And I think we probably should.
Um, okay, note that in, and the only thing I was gonna report beyond what you just reported is, um, at this stage, we have state and federal grant funding submitted and we're waiting. Um, the only other thing we have to do is, um, I'll have to schedule another joint meeting for us. Um, to meet, well, I'll pick a place like the library, uh, like we've done in the past. I'll do it at six thirty and, um, I'll, I'll send an email. But we'll wanna meet in the next two to three weeks, um, to set an agenda on what remains to be done in terms of. Activity for getting this, um.
Eighteen.
All one. Um, you know, like support and donations. And number two, going after all of these other. And then number two, going after all of these other, um, sources of funding. Like the Wharton Trust grant, is that, you said that's, is that all done?
No.
Okay, then the E M S source grant, we've gotta follow up with that.
Mike and I are gonna do that maybe this weekend.
Okay, and then the water company, I always tell gave us money, okay?
The water company.
Okay. Um, wow, okay. And then, uh, other private donors, Mike, in the past, when you were president of the Land Trust, there are other private donors that. Uh, and contributed some significant monies, uh, in the thousands with, uh, with respect to our last purchase of, um. So the question is, who are these donors? Do we wanna interview them again?
Well, there was one guy in particular, Henry Lord.
Yeah.
And I, I was not aware of it. Henry Lord at the time was the, uh, president, yes, of the Trust Republic Land. And I think it was, it didn't come, I think it came from the Trust Republic Land, it came of his, you know, he privately. Really came up. There was another one, uh, Paul Newman's group.
Oh. Yeah, Paul, yeah.
They, they gave us, they, they sent us a check early on.
And also, I just found out my neighbor Laura Holbany, she is the current president of this organization that gives out monies.
Middlesex Foundation.
The Middlesex Foundation, so I'm gonna follow up with her then. So in any event, the bottom line is, we'll have a meeting, uh, within the next two to four weeks. I'll set it up and then at that time we can coordinate, um, P R activities, uh, to cultivate support for the purchase and for donations from the general public. And also with regard to, um, following up on these other funding expenses.
Yeah, um, to that end, uh, the federal grant actually put a fairly high stake. And, and Mike has been traveling with me to at least one of the.
Oh, sustainability?
Yeah, we went, so one of the things they wanted was us to out get help from the community. Yeah, actually, prior, you know, sort of send strategy, like, the fact we haven't purchased yet sort of leaves that open for us. So I've asked to go in front of the Economic Development Committee. Um, we just need to get broad based community involved, so a P R campaign here.
Okay, so the economic committee, I have an article from Guilford, talking about Guilford, not the economic.
Yeah.
And bring that to that meeting. Let me know when.
Yeah, uh, Hank told me he would get me in. Yeah.
And so, uh, you have a.
By the way, Mark Richards used to be on the Community Foundation with my father-in-law.
Okay.
So I don't know if he's still on it or not, but he may be a Clinton resident that's actually on the Community Foundation board.
Okay, um, do you want me to fold this meeting before you guys are gonna meet, um, with the, uh, chancellor? When, when do you expect this meeting to happen?
You mean with the economic development?
Yeah, the economic development.
You know what, don't worry, I think at that, like, just.
Alright, so the last question is this, the other source of funding that we're gonna be looking for is from the town. Let me go back to where I'm from there. We've already submitted, you've already reported in the minutes that the county expenditure committee for next, that, that the town has, that put together the capital budget for next year.
Right.
Um, we've already submitted a request for, what was it, fifty, um, okay. What for this purchase coming up somewhere August to the end of the year?
No, for that, that, that's what it is.
Oh, okay, okay, so what do we do next with regard to that?
So, I would, so there will be opportunities for presentation of, of the budget. So as the Conservation Commission of the Capital Budget Night, it's important, I think, to have a presence to sort of say, well, here for this thing to help push this.
When is that gonna be?
I wanna say it's, it's my second, I remember the twenty-seventh, I think, in February, because I think it's the same night that all of my other budgets are on. Um. Yeah, I think it's six to eight on the twenty-seventh, I believe. I will, I'll wear a quick sound head. Thursday to twenty-seventh from six to eight, it's kind of council workshop, I believe the capital budget comes up that night. Um, so there's that, there will be sort of the final bit of the budget, I think it is March eleventh, that's another time that sometimes shifts in capital come up. Um, and then there is, uh, the, the normal sort of budget process. So it's gotta make it through the recommendation of the council and then the, the referendum and then all the tasks. So it's gotta go through all those normal pieces.
Right.
Assuming it stays in, then it's available till July.
Then it will be available anytime after July, the new budget.
Yep, yep. So, and then I think it's capital, so if dates change or things get pushed out or whatever else happens, it doesn't go away, it's on a, on a, on a basis.
And. If. We get so much funding from the federal and state. We're gonna, I've asked to have you to alter my request, take fifteen thousand with the new space.
For the next, yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so based on, different to, uh, violence here, based on everything we just said, it looks like this open space purchase. Um. It, it, to be completed, um, it's gonna occur sometime between August and say the end of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, that being said, then the next property we'll be looking for, do we wanna kind of hold back until we're finished with this property before we start the next one?
Look, it, it's, uh, it's, we should be aggressively reactive. Not proactive, but if there's something that seems like it's gonna come on the market, I'm ready to lose it.
You saw, you read one, said commercial, David, right after Egypt, more than Egypt Lane on the left. It's, it's a gorgeous piece. What, what? I looked the same one as before, but it says commercial.
It's, it's actually not. It's not, it's not, but, which they know. Um, but yeah, it, but it's a challenge, when there's been a lot of, a lot of, a lot of.
That property might have changed, which was property, um. Is that the mission just one? That property is contiguous to, uh, Egypt Lane property, it's about twenty-four acres. It is unbelievable.
You know, just looking for.
Where, I don't know what, he, there's three brothers. One of the brothers was Jack Green and I, I. He asked straight up, would you be interested in, you know, research? He goes, I would be. Basically, he was saying how they were located, um, you know, developers who come in. Interested in it. And they wanted something like, uh, somewhere around half, maybe. But, um. You know, it, it is, it is.
It's not flat.
No, it's, it's just, it's just a gorgeous piece of property. One of the streets.
And it may be contiguous to our own property, it may not. Does it have parking availability and road access?
There's parking availability in Egypt Lane, there's, and we own property or property.
I see.
Um, but, uh.
Which is the property that you're talking about?
At the end, you know, Egypt Lane?
Yeah.
Off that cul-de-sac, you, you walk down a driveway, it's, it's the property, I mean, right. And, uh, it's right next to, it, it borders through eighty-one. The signs are reading.
So it's on the end, is it on the end of Stonewall?
Yeah.
Cause that Stonewall has got a little piece of open space around it, so it connects to that.
It's. Property. But, maybe. Okay, I think it was just like, you know what? In terms of gathering documents, we've done it. That was probably the, at least from my perspective, that's the biggest pain in terms of getting an O squad grant. Now, we're way too late to do it for this year, but we can do it for next year.
This, this is such a long process, but wait until we can see this one.
No, 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 limited, we should, right, reach out. Yeah, we should reach out and, uh, let's, let's start that conversation. I mean, Michael, my, is there's those three properties behind, uh, free pot lane that are contiguous, there's these, yeah, fairly sized lots of land. Yeah.
Of the, uh, in, in the back of Jesse Buehl.
Yeah.
That would kinda be, isn't that paying to help?
That's, those would be.
Oh, yeah, that, that was a dream, that, that's been a dream of the Land Trust for like, you know, for, since I destroyed the trust. I mean, it's like, um, I'm blanking on people's name like. It's like fifty acres, so.
Yeah.
And it's unusual, uh, to talk, it's very, very beautiful. I don't see.
Is that the one that's north of, uh? Oh. North of where Jesse Buehl Forest is, no, north of, um, Taylor Ridge?
Yes.
Levis, the Levis.
Okay, yeah, that's nice up there.
I mean, I, I know that Stevens Engineering has served.
Yeah. You know. So one of the things I realize, and I'm sure Abby knows this, how much Larry gets to do, is these grants can be fairly size. So, half a million dollars does not intimidate me as much as it used to.
Some of the state, we had, it's, it's, it's overplayed, not.
Yeah, exactly.
So I, it's a new administration from the federal.
Yeah, okay, I made verdicts on the, the state branch.
Okay.
Anyway. Uh. Yeah, so I, I think the ultimate thing is that there's opportunities, we should pursue the.
That's, that's it. Couldn't get over that. Layer, man.
Yeah.
Then you, you wind up, as you come down, it's gonna be fun. There's just this, it drops off.
Yeah.
It's just, uh, I don't know, there's something about that property.
How many acres are there?
It's like about twenty-four acres.
Isn't that about the size of the one?
Yeah, and, and, properties contiguous. So be like.
Wow, but there's another property just north of that too, that belongs to Chittenden, isn't there?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think, uh, I, I mean, I don't know about the rest of this committee, but for me, it's sort of like, yeah. We should probably start that, it is a long, arduous process. And the good news is, we've done a lot of the, sort of foundational work already, you know, it's not gonna be as hard. The second, you know, who the surveyors are, you know how to get things done, and we know where the grants are buried, and you know where to go. Also, some of these guys turn the town, um, like the work foundation or whatever, you've gotta grab the chance.
So. One other thought, is that thing that's white now, is really nice property for sale, that has a antique house on. And then there was, remember the one over, uh, the borders of, what's it, what's the, and? Red, red, something, open space.
The, the, the place that you were complaining about, that doesn't do stewardship.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the, what do you call it? Red Wing, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm like, remember we bought this, at the pond, then Red Wing?
Yeah.
There used to be a like seventeen hundreds house there, they destroyed the house. And now they are building back in there and it's all tore up. Now, right now, it's one percent, looks like twenty-eight acres on Old Nod. It has an eighteenth century cape on it. And beautiful land with trails, a big wetland, a little beaver dam, a beautiful property. Is there a world in which you preserve the colonial house? And the land, like it's both in part of the open space? And you can open it up periodically, be looking like.
Um, unless it's already been designated as national historic.
Oh, they got us.
Uh, then they don't even have a knock in. Waiting for a certain period of time, and, and being way out there, it's not any historic, um, but.
History.
And history, or, or, so, um, there's really no protection from those outlawing areas.
That's what I'm saying, if one was destroyed already, this one probably at the same pace if somebody bought it.
Yeah, this is all from Nod.
Yeah, I think it's Old Nod.
So if you go, oh, if you were coming from Route One, you go over the highway.
Yeah.
And then you take a right.
Yeah, when you, you go High Street to.
Ten.
Yeah, you get down that road, you go over the highway. You go through all that.
This is on.
It's not the highway, it's not the highway, you come around on the right side, there's this whole cul-de-sac process. There's a pond on this side and then on that side, but that's actually the property, there's a big receiver installed.
Yeah.
Those are talking through, yeah. Um.
That's just one, no, that, that could be many.
And there's a, there's a definite interest there for affordable housing, that's come a couple of times, um.
Yeah.
Once you get up and over, there's like a saddle in the middle, it's kind of the.
Yeah, I walked in, I went there, checked it out with realers, with one in the house and everything. But it's just, you know, that's a handmade house, basically.
Wow.
From two hundred and something years ago. Well, if somebody is going to destroy.
Yeah.
They buy that.
Yeah.
And then there's all that land is gonna get built up. It's a great piece, I don't know what, if it's contiguous with anything else, but I didn't look into that, it's just, it's like twenty-seven acres.
Really?
Yeah, with trails on it already, like old logging road, kind of meandering through the hill.
That mass is stumped up near it. There, you see it on the highway. This pile of organic material.
That's farther east. That's farther east.
Farther east, yeah, so this also has an old foundation, probably a little farm was, a bank farm.
Uh, there, there's a group out of Massachusetts. They have properties, like, all over the state. And, um, they do this, the farm is still what I'm, farm and has. Renovated, get people on the properties, start a farm, you know, they leased it out. Or they have properties, they're trails. But it's like, it's an incredible, uh, structure, they're, they're room structure, because they're doing, you know.
Yeah.
They're preserving land, preserving farmland.
Yeah, that's true.
And they're, they're, they, they generate.
Well, Mike, if you could get the name of that organization, that's something me and I wanna share down the road. Particularly if we're approached by people who have historic houses or properties of significance, um, and then maybe we can.
Just a thought.
Yeah. Okay, so I, you know, why don't we, uh, why don't we come to the next meeting with, uh, various properties and flesh those out? And see if any of them is. Uh.
When is next meeting?
Yeah, so it would be, oh, I'm not even gonna be here next week, next, okay, maybe. Uh, so it's the, okay, let's, uh, second we could.
When's it, February twelve?
Yeah.
And that's, it's very new.
Yeah, okay, um. I think at this point, I need a motion to close the supplement.
Motion to adjourn.
Second on that motion, second, okay, uh, any discussion? No. All in favor? All opposed unanimously? Okay, then I need a motion to close the Conservation Commission meeting.
Second of the motion.
Larry, the motions. Mark seconds the motion, uh, any discussion? I, I like Jones already got. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, this meeting is officially adjourned.
We have time.